Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the July 20th, 2022, meeting of the Daytona Beach City Commission. We're delighted to have you with us this evening. Ms. La Magna will review the procedures for tonight's meeting.
Good evening. Agendas are available on the table in the lobby and in the front of the commission chambers. All of the exhibits pertaining to items on the agenda are posted in the lobby. Please feel free to view the exhibits at any time during tonight's meeting. You are required to fill out a yellow form to speak before the city commission on topics on the agenda. Forms are available on the table in the lobby and at the front of the commission chambers. You must complete the sections that ask for your name, address, agenda item number, signature, and date. The form must be completed and placed in the designated box. Item number seven is your opportunity to address the city commission concerning any item on the consent agenda. Please indicate on the yellow speaker sheet the agenda item number of the item or items that you are discussing. Items or discussions not listed on the consent agenda will not be heard during this comment section. Agenda items under item number nine are public hearings, and citizens may speak at their designated time. And resolutions under administrative item number 10 are open for public comment, and you may fill out a yellow form to speak when that item is called. Speakers will be allowed to speak for three minutes. When you approach a lectern, please speak clearly into the microphone and give your full name and address. The three-minute clock on the monitor above the dais will start running when you begin to speak. Pay close attention to your time. You will be told when your time is expired. Item number 12 is the public comment form, and this is the opportunity for the public to speak on any issue or topic that is not on the agenda. All citizens completing the green form will be allowed to speak for three minutes. When you approach a lectern, please give your full name and address. Disturbing conduct in the public meeting of the city commission. Article 2, Section 6238 of the City Code of Orifices reads as follows: "It shall be unlawful for any person to behave in a riotous or disorderly manner in any public meeting of the city commission or any committee, agency, or board thereof, or to cause any unnecessary disturbances therein by force, shouting, or any other action that is calculated to disrupt such meeting, or to refuse to obey any ruling of the presiding officer or such meeting relative to the orderly process thereof. Please be courteous and respectful of the views of others. Personal attacks on the city commission, city staff, or members of the public are not allowed. Please silence cell phones and other wireless devices during the meeting. All conversation must take place either at the lectern or on the dais so that everyone can hear the business being discussed tonight."
Ms. La Magna, may we have a roll call?
Commissioner Reed. Commissioner Trager. Commissioner Strickland. Commissioner May. Commissioner Cantu. Commissioner Henry. Mayor Derrick L. Henry.
Here.
Okay. We will move on to item number four, which is approval of the minutes. And there's a correction to what was initially published. This is approval of the minutes of the June 15th, 2022, city commission meeting.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
June?
June 15th, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion from Commissioner May, second from Commissioner Reed. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye. Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries six zero. Okay, at this time, we will have our agenda. If there are any changes, our city manager will address them.
I won't leave the office early again. Just, uh, out of mayor and commissioners, we have approval of minutes. They corrected the date. We're adding to item 8K, City Attorney's Office Engagement of Attorney Segundo Fernandez as outside counsel in relation to the wholesale service area agreements with the city of Ormond Beach. Item 8J, the following changes: 250 to the Ancient City Pipes &amp; Drums, Inc., DBA Coastal Florida Police and Fire Pipes &amp; Drums for the August 5th, 2022 Purple Heart Ceremony from the Bike Week sponsorship funds of Commissioner Cantu. The following donations from the Bike Week sponsorship funds to Commissioner Henry: $500 to Healthy Start Volusia County, $300 to Pay It Forward Corp., $250 to Women of Virtue, and $250 to She's Covered Corp. The following donations from the Bike Week sponsorship funds of Commissioner Reed: $250 to the Women of Virtue, $250 to She's Covered from Commissioner Reed's fund. We're removing item 10C, the pre-suit settlement agreement for the Bridgeport Heights subdivision River Approach. It's being removed to allow for further negotiations and will be brought back at a future meeting. Adding to the administrative items, resolution on coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund distribution. That concludes the changes to the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Take a motion from Commissioner Trager and a second from Commissioner Reed. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero.
Okay. We'll now move on to item number six, which is our presentations. Item number six A is beautification awards for July 2022, and a member of the Beautification Tree Advisory Board to report.
Mayor Henry, Jefferson. Of the city commission and Mr. Fiecher. My name is Jenny Nazak, 501 Harvey Avenue, Zone 3 member. The Beautification Tree Advisory Board has selected Amy Abalo, 120 South Oleander Avenue, as the residential beautification award winner for the month of July 2022. Amy has been a resident of Daytona Beach since 2016, when she moved from New York City. As a Realtor and an NYC resident since 1990, Amy has an affection for pre-war construction and historical homes. Surfside Village is on the National Register of Historic Places, and she has done her best to restore the property to its original state while adding modern amenities. The types of trees, shrubs, and plants used for beautification include: Florida pepper grass, bougainvillea, palm trees, cactus, banana tree, Meyer lemons, low quats, papayas, two apple trees grown from seed, and other fruit trees. City Commissioner Quanita May, Zone 3, will be presenting the award.
Good evening, ma'am. Thank you so much. I want to say thank you. I so appreciate that you and May are continuing the good work. I look forward to seeing you for this.
Thank you so much.
Mayor Henry, members of the city commission, and Mr. Fiecher. The Beautification Tree Advisory Board has selected the Krabby's and Landshark Restaurant Complex, 451 and 471 South Atlantic Avenue, as the commercial beautification award winner for the month of July 2022. The property is owned by CTO Realty Growth Incorporated and is managed by David Tu Roger. The business has been in the Daytona Beach area for 100 years. The building was originally constructed in 2017 for the purpose of two restaurants, Beachside Dining. The types of trees, shrubs, and plants used for beautification include: Bird of Paradise, Washingtonian Palms, Cabbage Palms, Med Jewel Palms, Beach Sunflower, Dwarf Holly, Share Juniper, Wide Leaf Evergreen Giant, Sea Oats, Petite Pink Oleander, White Indian Hawthorn, Silver Saw Palmetto, and Sea Grape. Mayor Derrick Henry will be presenting the award.
Thank you so much. Certificate of Achievement. May it be known that this certificate has been presented to Krabby's and Landshark Restaurant Complex for distinguished achievement in commercial beautification. City of Daytona Beach, Florida, presented this 20th day of July, signed by Commissioner Quanita May and myself, Derrick L. Henry, Mayor of City of Daytona Beach. I want to say that when these two properties opened, it was a real proud moment for our beachside. And things have gotten progressively better with more and more projects that are on the incline. And so, we appreciate you all for setting the standard then, but most importantly, for continuing the standard. Because we know that when you do something initially, it feels good. But maintaining it is what we greatly appreciate.
Thank you very much.
And for the record, Commissioner Henry is present as well. Okay. We're going to move on to item number seven. This is citizen comments for items on the consent agenda. And I have one speaker, Ms. Sandy Murphy, that's speaking on 8B.
Good evening, Sandy Murphy, 136 Park Avenue. I want to go back to the Minity Island deed restriction that you voted on in the CRA meeting. I still think that putting a... an action like requesting a release of the deed restriction on a public property deserves better than being stuck in the consent agenda in the middle of a lengthy lease that most of your constituents will never see. I think it deserves a public hearing. I think it's something that should be pulled out of this particular lease and that you should address separately. Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, if I could, just to be clear, I spoke with the manager in the interim, and I believe we were going to pull the Espinade lease off of consent and have a separate vote on that following consent. Is that correct?
Correct.
Because, and the reason being is we had two negative votes on that item, and it wouldn't be appropriate to have it on consent agenda with the negative votes.
So, we're going to move on to the consent agenda, and this will be for all the items on the consent agenda, included what was added except for item B.
So, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some of.
A motion from Commissioner Cantu and a second from Commissioner Reed. All right. Do we have any questions or comments? All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero. Seven zero, sorry, seven zero.
And then, we'll have... Do we have a motion on 8B?
Yeah, we'll take a motion on 8B, which is a separate item. Let's say Espinade.
I'm sorry, for the amended and restated riverfront Espinade Development, Maintenance, and Lease Agreement.
Second.
Have a motion. We have a second. All right. Do we have any questions? No comments? All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
No.
Motion carries, I believe, five two.
Okay. We'll move on to item number nine, which is our public hearings. Item 9A is city manager's office addition to the Code of Orifices for establishment of a public arts program. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance amending the City Code of Orifices to create a new Chapter IV consisting of Sections 4.1 through 4.6 to establish a public arts program, including provisions for the creation of a public arts advisory board, public arts fund, and public arts collection and establishment of purchasing procedures for public art acquisition contracts, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Commissioner Reed and a second from Commissioner May.
I do have a speaker, Mr. Mayor.
I'm Margaret Snibly-Hodge. Y'all might recognize the middle name. My mother worked for the city for 35 years. I grew up in Daytona Beach. It's one of the reasons why I'm here tonight, just although I live in Ormond Beach. I've lived up there for the last 20 years. But I do want to applaud the city for this new program that they're stepping into. It's a big deal when you get into the arts. I've been in the arts community almost all my life. And I have helped craft some such advisory boards and mural programs for the city of Ormond Beach. When I read... I only got to read the ordinance recently, and I only had a few comments. And one of those is I was concerned that it did not include on your membership museum curators or directors. I had that as a concern because they can bring so much to the table relative to community standards, raising sponsorship monies. I see that you're going to try to raise some money. They have a great deal of knowledge when it comes to that. I know that you have three positions that that person could slide into, but I don't see them as one of your recommended criterias. The other thing that I hope I can offer to you is that I didn't see in the ordinance either that your advisory board might be able to go beyond a purchase program only. It seems to focus on purchasing... When there are so many public arts programs beyond purchasing, that you might have them research and bring forward. So, I don't know if that ordinance limits them to just this purchase program or if you're going to look to them to give you advice on additional types of programs you might pursue. So, I don't know if the ordinance is really exempting them from doing that or not. But anyway, that's my recommend... You know, I would recommend that with the experience that I have that y'all might consider...
Allowing them to...
Allowing them to bring other programs for you... to you instead of just a purchase program.
Okay.
May I respond to a couple of questions? If you don't mind. Because I did want to point out there was a change in version second reading approved by the manager, and it incorporates, I think, one of your comments with regard to membership. And I'll read. The four PAAB members shall have advanced... This is an addition. Shall have advanced education or training in the arts or be from one of the following occupations: professional artist, architect, landscape architect, urban planner, or engineer. So, we made the change to incorporate someone who had advanced training or education in the arts to be as one of the identified members with special...
So, you would put the director or curator under that qualification? Because it's... The other ones say specifically engineer or something like that, so it seemed a little...
Right. We wanted to pick up individuals that may have specialized training, maybe a master's in fine art or something like that that may not be their occupation, but they would have experience in that field.
Okay. And then, addressing the other one about the limitations, can this... Does the board have the ability to bring you other ideas?
Yes. And I believe that's covered in the ordinance as well. Under the duties and responsibilities of the board, the board can make recommendations to the commission with regard to any policies which promote public art. So, they have policy authority, if you will. They also have the authority to perform any duties assigned by the city commission.
So, if they had some ideas, they could come to you and you could affirm that you would want them to do that? Okay, that's all I'm just related to talking about. And I applaud, again, the program that you...
I have a question. Ms. Snably-Hodge, I have a question for you. What types of other programs did you mean? You said these are some other programs that the city could be involved in. What do you mean by that?
Well, there's just all kinds of ways where you can do different mural programs. There's, you know, there's just different ways to manage that. I think that your advisory board should have some experience in those different ways that you can approach mural programs. Ormond Beach did it totally different than, you know, say they did over in Osceola. Gainesville has pulled in some major players to do the murals to be a destination for murals. So, it really depends on what you want that mural program to be, whether you want it to have... be a destination for people to come to or if you want it to just be enjoyed by the local... the local public. It's totally different approaches to the mural programs. The other things that we used to do... The Museum of Arts and Sciences used to provide art for the interior of buildings, and they haven't done that for some years. It's sort of fallen away. But that used to be a free loan program that they provided. So, there's different things that when you do public art programs, you can incorporate more than just purchasing art and being responsible for the upkeep and the care for that art.
That's the part that's interesting to me, the loaning process. Thank you.
That was my only speaker for this item.
Okay. We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, staff.
Okay. We're going to move on to item 9B, which is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division. Tamoka Town Center Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance adopting a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment in accordance with Chapter 163, Part 2 Florida statutes, amending the future land use element Neighborhood S development policy to revise maximum residential density and non-residential intensity for approximately 7.2-plus acres of property generally located southwest of the intersection of Cornerstone Boulevard and Williamson Boulevard, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective date.
Some of. Second.
We have a motion. We have a second.
And I do have Mr. Rob Merrill here on behalf of the applicant for any questions.
Do we have any questions of Mr. Merrill? Hearing none. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Moving on to item 9C. It's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, a Second Amendment to Tamoka Town Center PD, Plan Development General. This is an ordinance on second reading quasi judicial hearing. An ordinance approving the Second Amendment to Tamoka Town Center Plan District Agreement relating to development and use of approximately 118 acres of property generally located east of Interstate 95 and south of LPGA Boulevard, west of Williamson Boulevard, to increase the maximum number of residential dwelling units and decrease the maximum non-residential development permitted within specific areas of the property, subject to conditions. Authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the Second Amendment to the agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective date.
So move.
We have a motion. We have a second.
And again, I have Mr. Rob Merrill here on behalf of the applicant for any questions.
All right. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, moving on to item 9D. It is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Project Oasis, Plan Development General. This is an ordinance on second reading quasi judicial hearing. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Lands of Amlet Code to rezone 184.6-plus or minus acres of property bounded by LPGA Boulevard to the north, North Williamson Boulevard to the west, North Clyde Morris Boulevard to the east, and Mason Avenue to the south. From PD Plan Development General and M3 General Industrial to PDG Plan Development General, approving the Project Oasis Plan District Agreement to allow for mixed-use development of the property, including residential, commercial, and light industrial uses, subject to certain conditions. Authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective date.
So move.
Got a motion. We have a second. Do we have any speakers?
I do have speakers, and I do have Mr. Mark Watts here for presentation. Did you want to do the presentation first Did you want to do the presentation first or the speakers?
We'll do the speakers.
Okay. Our first speaker is Ann Ruby and on deck is Sandy Murphy.
Coming with more bundles. Ann Ruby, 137 Park Avenue. I go to a lot of these developer-initiated meetings and I cannot remember one in recent memory that I have been as pleased with as Project Oasis. The two connector roads I think are really important, given what's going on out there in terms of traffic, but also the proposed plan, and I understand it's not the final version, that they showed made it look, seem like it will be a very livable, human-scaled community, which you don't often see in a lot of these big developments out here. So I think that this is a great project and I would hope that you would approve it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sandy Murphy.
Sandy Murphy, 136 Park Avenue. I would repeat everything that Ann said and I just wanted to add that in light of having a discussion about moratorium, I think that it's going to become more and more imperative that you start to look at these projects in terms of the quality that they're bringing to our community. And this one does bring quality in terms of design and does some tremendous things in terms of connectivity, particularly in roadways where we're anticipating coming problems. So I just encourage you to look critically at the things that are coming in front of you and this is one that really deserves your support.
Okay. Those were my two public speakers and then I have Mr. Watts here.
I don't know that your presentation is necessary.
I went to sit down.
Yeah. Let me, let me go on, let me, let me go on record. I don't know if any of you have comments. I had great consternation about the project, not because of the quality of the project. And I've spent all of yesterday reviewing the project, writing the project with Mark and meeting with business leaders in the community, well, not business, but CEO of hospital that is selling the project. And it's, it's a hell of a good project. And ordinarily, it would have easily passed my approval. But what I came away with was I think what Sandy just said, and this is what I think we should do from now on with any project that comes to our attention, that's in that corridor. I came away with a new standard for what we should be looking for and that's really what it's about. And so from now on, we should be looking for projects like this or we should be outright rejecting them. It, it, the connector roads, the, the plan, fact that your city manager is considering that as his future residence, it, it, all of that goes a long way with saying that, and I said this to you guys when I met you, I wish you'd come first so that we, we would have seen this standard and been able to ask this of others. But what I think we should do most is that any other project in the future, they need to consider how they get out of their project as opposed to dumping everything onto the major thoroughfares all at once and not creating avenues and routes and thoroughfares that enhance our overall community. I, I knew this before yesterday, but I also think that my statements still stand as it relates to the consideration of what we can do in the future. But you don't, what I, what I'm reminded of is you don't take a bad project, a great project, and penalize it because you have other bad projects or mediocre projects. So we, we have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any other questions or comments? None. All right. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero. The manager said aye, he said eight zero. You don't, you don't get a vote, sir.
We're going to move on to item nine E, which is the Development Administrative Services Planning Division, First Amendment to Williamson Crossing, amended and restated PD. This is an ordinance on second reading quasi judicial hearing. An ordinance approving the First Amendment to Williamson Crossing, amended and restated Plan District Agreement between the city and the shops at Williamson Crossing LLC to allow for a veterinary hospital or clinic as a permitted use, subject to conditions. Authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the amendment to the agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict here with and providing an effective date.
So move.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any speakers?
I do have Ms. Jessica Gao here on behalf of the applicant for any questions.
All right. No. All right. Motion and second, all those in favor let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
Okay. Move on to item nine F, it's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, First Amendment to the Integrated LPGA PD. This is an ordinance on second reading quasi judicial hearing. An ordinance approving the First Amendment to Integrated LPGA Plan District Agreement relating to traffic signal at the intersection of Grand Champion Boulevard and US 92, which is subject to a separate contract between the city and the planned district developer. Authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the First Amendment to the PD agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict here with and providing an effective date.
So move.
We have a motion from Commissioner Cantu, we'll take a second from Commissioner Henry. All those in favor.
Wait.
Speaker, my bad.
I was going to say, I do have Mr. Watts here, Mark Watts here.
Yes, I would like him to come up and explain a few changes.
Mm-hmm.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. For the record, Mark Watts with the law firm of Cobb Cole, 231 North Woodland Boulevard to land. This is, you're familiar with this, this is the project where we, our client, Lennar and American Southwest 30 worked to advance a signal that's being installed at Grand Champion. I want to give you a quick update on that. You're actually going to see work beginning. You know, when we were here in April, we amended the capital recovery agreement and this is really a housekeeping change to make the PD agreement and the capital recovery agreement match. But we had a couple of concerns that were expressed by email over the past couple of days, so I wanted to give you a quick update with regard to where the signal is and then make one minor change here to address that concern that was raised by, by somebody in the, a couple of folks in the neighborhood. From a timing standpoint, back in April, you approved the capital recovery agreement. We also posted a $1.2 million bond to the city, so you have a bond in your hands now that if we didn't comply with the terms of the capital recovery agreement, which says that we have to have all the work done and the signal installed and operational by the end of this year, then you have the funds on hand to finish it and you have the right to the permits that, that we've, we've pulled to, to finish it. And Lennar has been great at making sure that, you know, I think the day that we had the, you know, that hearing approved, the bond was here in your hands. And so I applaud them for that. And over the past three months, I think there's a little frustration from the neighborhood because they were like, all right, now we're going to see the signal go in. Now, there's been utility locates done, there's been all the procurement taken care of. And so I wanted to let you know, foundation work on those mast arms is currently scheduled to start the first week in August. So you'll hopefully see actual progress occurring out there with those mast arm signals being installed. And if you recall, this was originally supposed to happen back in 2006 or so when the original developer built out in Grand Champion. So finally, that's going in, I think it's, you know, long overdue safety improvement there. The concern that, that was raised to us was that there was some, you know, some manner of inconsistency between the language in this amendment and what's in the capital recovery agreement. Now, this amendment incorporates that capital recovery agreement by reference, so it's effectively all here. But there were two minor changes that I talked with your staff about earlier today that I think could clarify that. And so in the operative section of the capital, or of the amendment here, there's a clause that says if the signal is not completed prior to commencement of Phase B of the project, the city will be authorized to withhold issuance of residential certificates of occupancy within Phase B. What I would suggest, and our clients have stipulated to this change, and we can, you know, slip sheet it before we record the, the change or the amendment, if the signal is not completed and operational, add that and operational, so that it's, it's clear that the signal has to be there and operating in accordance with its design, then the city shall withhold the issuance of those rather than may, or may be authorized or will be authorized. So just make it clear, the city will withhold those, those COs at that time and we're fine with stipulating to those changes to make sure that there's no concern about inconsistency. So with that, I appreciate your support on this. Again, otherwise, it's a housekeeping matter to make the agreements consistent with one another. So happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. I have no questions. Thank you, Mark. I would like to call Deputy City, Deputy City Manager Jim Morris up.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner Jim Morris, Deputy City Manager.
Jim, there was a few, there's a little bit of confusion regarding the signal about traffic going through there, I guess, oh, what's the road?
Well, it's the spine road that's going to go through A and B of that. Yes, ma'am?
Good thinking of the road. Okay. Could you address that?
I can.
Okay.
So the agreement really is intended not to have residential traffic go on the road until the signal is there. Stipulations Mark just discussed were things that we discussed earlier today to make it emphatic that that would not occur. There is at least one property owner that thinks somehow something bad is going to happen. You've got to build the road, the houses have got to be built, but without COs for houses going in, there won't be substantial traffic there. The permits, as Mark explained, are issued, the traffic light's about to commence construction with the foundations. One of the delays in doing the light anyway was that DOT actually changed the specs part way through to make it a wider section of road, which meant longer aluminum arms. And in the COVID times, it's been very difficult to get those kind of things. They are very expensive things to acquire and they're very large. So from the perspective of the road, the road can be finished and it needs to be finished and connected. You don't come and build a road from here, here, stop here, so somebody can't drive through. It's not the way you mobilize contractors or get a road, good road output. So there may be traffic related to Phase B that would go through as they work on the houses. Phase A can't reach this intersection without Phase B, so Phase B would have to be built and it's not being commenced now, it's being commenced later. So from the perspective of traffic coming through that affects the other people that use the intersection, it's minimal and won't be there until the light is completed and operational and they are about to commence construction of the light. Construction is probably the shortest time period thing that has to happen, given that the foundations are there and the wiring is there.
And can you also verify there has been no change to the proposed PD amendment from July 6th to tonight?
Other than the change that Mark just referenced, so this is tonight with a change there. No other changes and we had a discussion as well about the capital recovery agreement because there was concern about when two documents conflict and you have an attorney that can talk to you about that. But to make sure that there was acknowledgement from the developer that the capital recovery agreements and the provisions therein stay in place and not be seen as something that's superseded by the amendments that are here tonight.
Thank you.
No other questions?
No other questions.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good job, sir. Thank you, ma'am. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
Mr. Mayor, just before, Mr. Watts wanted to make one statement on the Oasis that I think is very important for us. So if you could just say what the developer is doing for the city of Daytona Beach that will be beneficial long-term for us.
Yeah, we're going back one. One of the things that, that came up kind of late in, in the, the process with the Oasis project was the city came to us and indicated because of the development that's occurred out on that side of, of town, there's a need for the city to have another fire station. And so we've worked with, with the city staff to identify the location. We've added some language to the development agreement that will be in the final version that gets signed. It indicates we will be working with the city to donate that, we'll get our fire impact fee credits for it, but we've located it along Clyde Morris. You know, there's one of two options, you can see it here. This is right across, just to orient you, right across from Be Braun and the Clyde Morris Apartments that Atlantic Housing is developing from where the Oasis connection will be made. So this is right on that connection that'll go through from Tomoka Town Center to, you know, the Be Braun area and we'll be working with, with you all to dedicate this to the city as a fire station location. So we wanted to make sure you're aware of that and to make sure that we can get those changes into the development agreement, so.
Thank you, Mr. Watts.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, that was a big omission.
Were you moved so quickly?
I know I did, but it's, it's great. And they've also worked with staff in terms of location, given options, one location as opposed to the other, whichever way it works out. Should have came 10 years ago, but, but glad to have you now.
Say it again.
Thank you. Looks forward to it.
Okay. We're going to move on to item nine G, which is the Development Administrative Services Planning Division, Space Coast Credit Union Small-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance adopting a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment in accordance with Chapter 163.3187 Florida statutes, amending the future land use map designation of 4.1 plus or minus acres of property located at the northwest intersection of Bill France Boulevard and Checkered Flag Boulevard from office transition to commercial amusement, amending the future land use element Neighborhood P to restrict the maximum residential density for the property, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict here with and providing an effective date.
So move.
All righty, I'll say, Commissioner Reed and say I heard a second, Commissioner Henry.
And I do have Mr. Watts here for any questions.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Do we have any questions of Mr. Watts? All right. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
Okay. Moving on to nine H, it's the Development Administrative Services Planning Division, Second Amendment to the First Amended and Restated Daytona Mixed Use PD. This is an ordinance on second reading quasi judicial hearing. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezone 4.1 plus or minus acre tract located at the northwest corner of Bill France Boulevard and Checkered Flag Boulevard from OP Professional, Office Professional to PDG Plan Development General, approving the Second Amendment to the First Amended and Restated Daytona Mixed Use Plan District Agreement to incorporate the tract into the Daytona Mixed Use Plan District, authorizing additional commercial uses and revised development criteria, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the Second Amendment, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict here with and providing an effective date.
So move.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Reed and we'll take a second from Commissioner May.
And I do have Mr. Watts here for any questions.
One you.
Sorry.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, I had Mr. Watts here for any questions.
Okay. No questions? All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
Okay. Moving on to item nine I, it's the Development Administrative Services Planning Division, Allow Codifier to Correct Typos in the Land Development Code. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance amending the land, city's land development code, Article 1, to add Section 1.10 supplementation of code to allow the codifier to make non-substantive changes to the LDC, including correcting manifest, cross-referencing, grammatical numbering, and spelling errors, repealing all ordinances or parts of notices in conflict here with and providing direction to the codifier and providing an effective date.
So move.
We have a motion from Commissioner Reed and a second from Commissioner Henry.
And I have no speakers for this item, Ms.
No speakers. Okay, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
Okay. Moving on to item nine J, it's the Development Administrative Services Planning Division. This is the glitch bill for Land Development Code text amendment. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance amending provisions of the Land Development Code, amending Section 3.3.1 in relation to planning board hearings and notices, amending 3.4 in relation to variances, administrative adjustments, and easement abandonment, amending Section 3 point, excuse me, amending Section 6.3.1 in relation to encroachment of outdoor seating areas into the right-of-way, amending LDC Section 6.4.1 in relation to material specifications for shade trees, amending Section 6.12.1 exterior color and design standards on major city thoroughfares, amending LDC Section 6.13.1 street trees, amending LDC Section 7.2 required infrastructure, repealing all licenses or parts of licenses in conflict here with and providing an effective date.
And a motion from Commissioner May, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Strickland.
And I have no speakers for this item, Mr. Mayor.
All right. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
Okay. Move on to item number nine K, it's the Development Administrative Services Planning Division, Hillwood Plan Development General. This is an ordinance on second reading quasi judicial hearing. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezone 211 plus or minus acres of property located approximately 1,200 feet east of, 1,200 feet southeast of the intersection of Williamson Boulevard and Bellevue Avenue, on the south side of Bellevue Avenue, across from the Daytona Beach International Airport, from M3 General Industrial and MSD Major Sports District to PDG Plan Development General, approving the Hillwood Plan District Agreement, authorizing the development of large-scale light industrial uses, limited high-intensity commercial uses, and institutional uses, subject to certain conditions. Authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement, repealing all licenses or parts of licenses in conflict here with and providing an effective date. And due to an advertising error, it asks that this item be continued until the August 3rd, 2022, the city commission meeting.
So move.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner May and a second from Commissioner Reed. Commissioner Cantu, my apologies. All right. And all those in favor of continuance, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to item number 10, which is our administrative items. Item number 10A is Information Services and Budget Division, setting of the tentative fiscal year 2022-23 millage rate. This is a resolution. A resolution authorizing the notification to the property appraiser for advertising purposes, the city of Daytona Beach fiscal year 2022-23 proposed tentative operating millage rate of 5.5300, the current rollback millage rate of 5.0103, the voted debt service millage rate of 0.2038, the first public hearing date of September 7th, 2022, on the tentative millage rate and proposed fiscal year 2022-23 budget and providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Commissioner May and a second from Commissioner Henry.
I don't have any speakers for this item, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
I do have a question.
Okay.
What would it take to get to rollback?
It'd be about a $3.6 million cut in our budget.
Okay.
That's a lot.
Yeah. Okay.
Wow. More than I'm used to, but, okay. That doesn't mean we still can't cut something. But anyway, all those in favor, because we have a, well, let me, let me go back.
You can go down, you just can't go up.
I know. Well, I'll just say this and say that during my comments. We have a motion and a second, no other comments. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
Okay. We're going to move on to item 10B, which is the Development Administrative Services Department, Bi-October Fest 2022 Master Plan for Private Property Resolution. A resolution approving with conditions the Bi-October Fest 2022 Master Plan for Outside Activities on Private Property and authorizing outside activities during Bi-October Fest October 13th through October 16th, 2022 pursuant to City Land Development Code Section 5.4.11, temporary outside activities associated with the festival, establishing conditions for all of the approved applications and uses and providing an effective date.
So move.
Motion from Commissioner Cantu, a second from Commissioner Henry.
And I do have speakers here for this item, Mr. Mayor. Our first speaker is Tom Guest and on deck is John Nicholson.
Good evening, Mayor Henry, members of the commission, city staff. My name is Tom Guest, 721 Garden Lane, Ormond Beach, Florida, and I have properties from 608 to 618 Main Street in Daytona Beach. And as usual, the city staff and the convention of visitor bureau work really, really hard on putting this plan together over a period of months and we met on June 24th, the Bi-October Fest Development Committee to review the plan and we went through it at length and found that everything that came into compliance and we moved to approve this plan upon contingencies that a few little things would have to be done and finished by October 3rd, the people would not be able to participate in the, in the Bi-October Fest for private property. Anybody have any questions? I know we're anxious to get out of here tonight, but I'll keep it short.
No questions. All right, no questions?
Thank you.
Okay, and our final speaker is John Nicholson.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granville Avenue. As you know, this was established with the idea that they would use the funds to keep their properties up, all right? The city at one point owned the parking in the middle of Main Street. We gave it away 10, 12 years ago. It has not been improved since, all right? I'm asking you to look at Main Street, two things. One, that, that we try to find a way to require what we had planned on 35 years ago, to improve Main Street. If you look at those parking lots right next to Humphreys, all right, it's been an eyesore for 35 years. They tore down the building, asphalted it over, and at times, we allowed them to put vendors on the property with weeds this high and the garbage still there as they were selling food and people were sitting in the garbage. We allowed that, all right? If you look at the property, and thank you for the three properties that you did finally force to improve, the laundromat is now a functioning year-round barber shop, the photo shop is closed, the decal shop is closed, but I'm asking you to look at the overall appearance of Main Street. Those parking lots should have been done when the city owned them, all right? Now that that bar owns the property, if they want to use it, they should bring it up to standard. There are holes, we would not allow that anywhere else, nowhere else in the city do we allow this kind of neglect. This code ward hits all of these places except Main Street. The code should apply to those parking lots and they be brought up to code. And lastly, it's been 35 years. It's time that we looked at all of the regulations for Main Street. Zan Kuhn has been gone for 32 years. What she put into place needs to be reviewed. We need to look at what's required and what's not required. We've changed things over the years. People are getting older, Bike Week is... Bike Week is not going to generate the funds that it did in the past, so let's look at it again to see if there's any restrictions that we can lift to help Main Street and Bike Week and Bi-October Fest function in the years to come. Thank you.
That was my final speaker.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be.
Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you. For the record, Commissioner Traeger has submitted a Form 8B memorandum of voting conflict for a municipal officer, and her voting conflict is she's the partial owner of some of the properties involved in the master plan.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero.
Okay. Item 10C was pulled from the agenda, so that was our last agenda item.
All right, we'll have comments from the commission.
Commissioner Reed.
Who's first? Commissioner Reed?
Yes, sir. I like yourself, I am just pleased to say that I was a part of the representation from our state to see the unveiling of our statue, Dr. Mary McLoughlin in Washington, DC. I was honored to be there, particularly being a Wildcat, to see that come to full fruition from bringing the statue home to taking it to DC. It was a great honor to be amongst you all in Washington.
Yes, ma'am.
And just grateful that the state of Florida also hosted our regional conference for Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. I want you to know that as you continue to support the Daytona Beach Luminary Chapter, we have 31 members to attend that regional conference to continue to, I tell them to, you got to go in order to grow so that you'll know, because we only do it the Delta Way. That includes my comments. Okay. And we're going to interrupt Commissioner comments to bring you. This, we all forgot about it, except for Anne Rui. Thank you very much. It's Andy Murphy. They added on tonight this resolution authorizing grants from the coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds, authorizing the budget officer to amend the budget as necessary, establishing reporting deadlines, and providing for an effective date. So this is all on your dais tonight.
So move.
We have a motion and a second. We have any comment? None, we've already had it, by helping us. Thank you. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero.
Thank you guys so much. Sorry about that.
It's all right.
Okay.
Commissioner Traeger?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Strickland?
I'll just comment that I think we still need to keep looking in, like you said earlier, Mayor, keep an eye on the developments we approve. Oasis was a fine development. If all the ones preceding that had been of that quality, we'd be in a bunch better shape, and we need to maintain that standard going forward. Also, the homeless and affordable housing thing continues to grow. I continue to read stuff about affordable housing and homeless populations growing nationwide because of inflation and those kinds of things. We need to keep those in mind before we get into a crisis mode going forward. We got a good shelter out there and some good plans going forward to raise money for it, and I hope we can continue to keep it going, improve the quality, improve the number of people that we have in there for the services that they need. With that, I'll be quiet for the evening.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner May?
I want to be. Yeah, the BCU PAC event for Mary McLoughlin event and the statue, and Ms. Daisy Grimes did a fantastic job orchestrating the entire thing. I watched her at work. It was wonderful. Really well done, and we had community people there, we had students there, we had educators there, administrators there. Really, really nice event to attend for a few hours. I will say, I enjoyed the workforce housing event that we had today. I liked the toolkit concept. I spoke with the gentleman afterwards, and he said, "We have multiple ways of addressing it, not just one," and I appreciated that. From that perspective, I really want us to take a look at, and I'll be researching also, some of the other things that we're doing, so it's not just one-pronged approach to it. To that end, I will say that the tiny home that I brought here in November has moved forward. Ms. Lucy came forward, she's doing the Brentwood Village project just this past week. They had a meeting where we had residents come out and discuss, take a look and ask questions of the developer doing it. I believe it was well received, and it's an actual small footprint affordable housing community of 28 units. So that is yet another way, it's just 28 units, but it's helping toward the bigger picture. So this might definitely be a situation where we take multiple approaches in various parts of the city to improve our workforce housing situation. And that is about it. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I agree with you, multiple, multiple, because it's a big problem, so it takes a lot of different approaches. Commissioner Cantu?
Yes, I have a question for Mr. Jagger. Pelican Bay is private roads, and, but in 1987, there was an agreement that Pelican Bay had with the city about traffic devices. Well, the master HOA has put in some speed bumps, I wouldn't call them humps, because they're for parking lots, and I've had many, many residents calling me and wanting them removed. And I believe that we have to go, that Pelican Bay has to go through the same with our LDC as any other community with traffic devices. Could you verify that?
Yes, and I should mention, you'd asked me to look at this earlier so I could speak to it tonight. The city does have an agreement with the associations within Pelican Bay to provide for traffic control within the subdivision. So the speed humps that were put in were not put in by the city, they were put in essentially without authorization from the city. The city is the sole entity who provides that traffic control, so I would recommend, and Andy, maybe you can speak to this if you don't mind, but assuming that that speed hump is not up to standards, if you will, required by the state or by the city, they would need to be replaced pursuant to our standard procedures for implementing that. I think that's generally a neighborhood poll of some sort, and I don't have the details off.
Yeah, actually, we, a resident on one of our private sites, and I've been, like I said, I've been having a lot of calls, a lot of damaged vehicles, because they're not actually humps, they are bumps, I believe. Am I correct? And actually, we've had some accidents too, the whole suspension, I'm not a mechanic, but some vehicles as well. And I guess I need to have you speak more regarding, between the difference between bumps and humps.
And before you start, the only thing I can really confirm for you is that the association has no authority to regulate traffic. That is solely under the agreement, the responsibility of the city.
So before we go, so then that means that they are illegally?
Correct.
At least in violation of our contract, yes. And probably in violation of FDOT standards, but I'll let Andy speak to that.
And we actually had a, well, a resident did a survey on one of our private sites, and I'm actually looking at it right now. There was 198 comments wanting them, well, let me say, there's probably about 13 out of 198 comments that want them removed as well. And I know some of the other HOAs, which we have 17 HOAs, would like them removed as well, but if you could speak on this, what we can do about this, because I know, I believe the stop signs, I mean, all the signage is all related to the city, correct?
Yeah, Andy Holmes, Public Works, good evening. The speed humps are a traffic control device, just like a stop sign or a traffic signal or pavement marking. So our staff is going to take a look at those in the morning, and then if they, which I kind of expect based on what I've heard, if they're not installed in accordance with the policy, which I don't believe they are, then we'll instruct the HOA to remove them. We'll give them a couple of weeks to do it, or our staff can remove them after that. And then the process to evaluate, if we get a request, and we have yet to receive a request for an evaluation from the HOA, but if they wanted to request us to evaluate the suitability of that neighborhood for speed humps, we can do that. Requires a traffic study, and then if the traffic study demonstrates a warrant for the speed humps, then the survey is done, and 51% of the affected parties have to vote for the speed hump in accordance with our policy. So we're certainly happy to go through that process with them or any other resident that feels the need for a speed hump, so we're happy to help.
And Andy, would that be 51% of wherever you say that the study says a speed hump could be put there?
It'd be, it would be 51% of the affected parties, and we, our staff determines that, so, yeah, but it essentially would be the residents of the subdivision in that case, probably.
So I would like a letter to be sent to the HOA to give them two weeks to remove them if my, rest of my commission and the mayor is okay with that. Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. That concludes.
That's it. Thank you.
Dr. Bethune's statue will be installed at the former Riverfront Park on August 18 at 9:00 AM. That is the final installation, and that is the Daytona Beach version that was mentioned earlier tonight. And it is, will be, you know, I'll just put it to you this way, it's going to be our way of saying that we have given her legacy to America and the world. But for me, this particular version of the statue says that it is our responsibility as a community to continue to be the purveyors of her last will and testament and her overall philosophy, and to see her as our, our rudder, if you will. So I hope that you all will join me, I will offer, be a part of the program that morning in representing the city and her legacy. So I hope that you all, if you can, join us, 9:00 AM, August 18. On that same day, that evening, will be the first viewing of the documentary that has been produced on her life. And we have, you know, as a part of the Statuary Fund Committee, that is, this day is our last day, and this documentary, we hope will be shown in schools we know throughout Volusia County, Florida. Through our work last week, it has a good chance of going national, because I believe that Dr. Bethune's story, as great as it is, it still has not received the credit that it deserves. I believe at some point in time, it should be a major motion picture. It just, her life really resonates with all of that. And so this, on this day, we will release the documentary that evening, and so you're welcome to join us for that as well. News Journal Center, I believe, is five or six, same day, August 18.
I think it's. You said 9:00 AM.
No, 9:00 AM is the statue program. The unveiling of the documentary will be that evening, yeah, August 18. I have, I think it's six, but don't quote me on that, I'll let you know. Okay, all right. And the next is steady. Appreciate finally getting it, and look forward to us being able to vote on approval next week, and hopefully giving staff the authority to bring us something back that we can begin to execute, because we have talked about it, and now we have to be about it, got to have some solutions, because it's only going to get worse. That said, appreciate a great meeting tonight. Mr. Manager?
I'm going to report.
Okay. All right, that concludes our commission comments. We will now hear from the residents and citizens of Daytona Beach.
Okay, good evening. Our first speaker is Lieta Jackson, and on deck is Marjorie Johnson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commission. My name is Lieta Jackson. I am co-founder of the Women of Virtue Foundation. I don't know why I always get nervous when I'm in front of you all. I am co-founder, again, of the Women of Virtue Foundation, and we approached you all of the commission, I believe it was in May, for support, and we approached you in a public forum, so we thought it was only appropriate to come back and thank you in a public forum as well. For those of you that have humbled us by seeing the benefit of the work that we do and chosen to support us financially, Commissioner Cantu, always, always, we thank you. You have supported us for many years privately, and of course, through funds available through the commission. Commissioner Reed, I did hear that amendment, and I thank you. Also to you, Mr. Mayor, we just want to say thank you for your support. And to the remainder of the commission, please remember us going forward, as you start to earmark funds, the Women of Virtue is here. Though we live in, my husband and I, we live in Flagler County, all of our work is done here in Daytona Beach, and we ask that you just pay attention to what we do and give us whatever support you can. Thank you so much.
Your work speaks for itself, and it has for many, many years, and I'm proud and honored to be a part of it now, and hopeful that you will continue to grow in greatness. Flagler County may be where you sleep, but your work is here, even at Bethune-Cookman, and we appreciate all that you do.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Marjorie Johnson, and on deck is Libby Coleman.
Marjorie Johnson on 22 South East Street. I'm here tonight to say that disloyal conduct by city officials will not be tolerated. You're here to do the people's work, so you should be courteous to all of our residents. At this time, we don't have access to our elected officials. I don't have access to any of you. I think it's a disgrace because in the past, we always had access to our officials, Bud Asher, Mayor Scarlett Golden, and also the elected officials that sat in Zone 1 and Zone 6. At this time, they're not even meeting with the residents. And I've been here to City Hall on several occasions trying to get a meeting with the mayor and the city manager. I did meet with you twice, and the rest of you are not accessible, and that's a problem. You're reading the statement that Chisholm left here by the, that Mr. LeMagne, and that was left here by him. We never had that statement read anytime in the City Hall, and we, the residents, are the ones that's being abused. You have a pavilion up there, City Hall, that's full of bird crap, and when you took office, Mayor Henry, we had access to that pavilion. Now this time, we don't have access to it, and you closed it down, and it's full of bird crap. I went up there last week, and the crap is everywhere. You need to clean it and open it up and let the residents have access to that pavilion here by the library. You need to pave that lot. The county is in charge of that library, you are in charge of the lot. I'm of the library board of Volusia County, and we meet up there, and that lot is in terrible condition and needs to be paved. Also, I'd just like to say that it is your fault, the Orange Avenue Recreation Building went into dilapidated, and thank you, because you didn't keep it up. Also, this appointment that was made by a lady from Port Orange is a disgrace. We have enough people here to serve on these committees, so you need to appoint people here, and I brought it up in the past, do not be appointing people from Port Orange. Also, I'd like to say that I'm appalled that this city is getting so many lawsuits. The naked cowboy is getting over $90 million that's payable to his attorney, Robert Burke, for arresting him for false arrest and harassment and excessive force and damage. So this is a disgrace that we are paying out these lawsuits. We could use that money to pave some of these roads and other things in the community. So we want you to do your jobs that you're getting paid to do and be respectful of our residents and leave. Thank you.
No offense, John, but 90 million is one of your numbers. I just, I just had to try, you know? It's a big number.
Okay. Our next speaker is Libby Coleman, and on deck is John Nicholson.
My name is Libby Coleman, and I live at 837 Cottle Circus House. I was here at the first meeting, and I was talking, speaking in regards to Mayor Henry. And the only thing that we need, drainages. Nothing has been done. I've called, left messages. You, but you never showed up. And I have feelings. When it rains, we don't know when God is going to come with a flood. And our homes are going to get flooded out. And you have not gotten back with me yet in regards of getting some people to come out there and see about us. We only have three drainages in that circle. One drainage is next to my mailbox. And right across the street is another drainage. If you go out to the left, there's one drainage. We don't have three drainages. And I'm still waiting. And there's nothing has been done. I made several calls to your secretary, and I have not gotten back. You have not gotten back with me. Neither has our commissioner. And I am very much upset, very much. And I would appreciate it if something can be done with the drainages. Because we don't know. I don't know. See, God only knows. And when it comes down, you safe, and my house is flooded. Not only mine, there are others. And there's nothing has been done. You don't return my phone calls, and I get upset about that. And I have a reason to. My commissioner doesn't come over either. You all could talk together, but you got the final word. You can send men out there to do the job that needs to be done. You got a smirk smile on your face.
No, I'm looking at the manager because I don't recall receiving your calls.
What you mean, you have not rece, I was here the first meeting, the first meeting?
That's correct.
Okay. Think about it.
Yes, ma'am. You were here.
I know I was here. And the things that I'm trying to get done now was when I was first here. You haven't been around. You haven't made any phone calls, and neither has our commissioner. And I have a heart.
Yes, ma'am.
You say, yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
You can say that all day. But the only thing I want you to do, and the commissioner, you're the mayor. She's one of the commissioners. Nobody thinks about us. And it hurts my heart. It does. And I can't get my mouth around the, but then you made a statement the last, the first time that I was here. You told me about your sister used to live there. It doesn't matter.
Thank you, ma'am. Your time has expired. Your time's expired.
Your time's up.
Our next speaker is John Nicholson, and on deck is Frederick Brown.
John Nicholson, 413 North Cranbury Avenue. As I mentioned before, the Main Street CRA is, what, 35 years old, 37 years old? A great deal has been done on the ocean. Nothing has been done on Main. About 12 years ago, they created the entertainment zone. We plotted where the entertainment zone was. We plotted the number of vacant lots that we have. Now, redevelopment, they want you to get the small lots together to a larger lot, then put out an RFP. It's been 12 years that we've not put out an RFP on any of the seven major lots. These are huge lots that are ready for development, and we've never put out an RFP. We put out an RFP and got the Marriott, put out an RFP and got the extension to the Adams Mark, the Ocean Walk, the Wyndham. We need to continue with the RFPs to let people know that they have the ability to get something done in the Main Street area with benefits. Because when they get benefits, they build. Secondly, deed restrictions, all right? I understand that people are afraid of deed restrictions. They're afraid that we're going to develop the park. Well, no other city has 90% of their riverfront, their most valuable downtown, is undevelopable. We need to have some more development downtown. Yes, we're getting that huge apartment complex right there off of Main Street. But there are other areas that we can develop along the riverfront, and also in the riverfront itself. Because we can't just have vacant land. We've got to develop it. So I'm not afraid of the deed restrictions being lifted on certain areas, because the deed restrictions were from the state. That land that we're going to re, lift the deed restrictions were spoil islands. They were never there originally. Also, the A1A, the city has to maintain A1A. It looks terrible, especially around where the, they thought a grand is. And I know we took money from them to finish that, and then we gave it to FDOT to do it. Can we push them to get it done? A lot of people walk right past that to go to the Ocean Center. The other morning, I was having breakfast at IHOP, and there are thousands of kids walking to the Ocean Center from those religious groups that we have every year. So people rent or stay in hotels north and have to, that all the time to get to the Ocean Center.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Our next speaker is Frederick Brown, and on deck is Ann Ruby.
Good evening, Frederick Brown, 501 Christian Bridge, Daytona Beach. 26 months ago, bad mistake was made. One of the reasons that mistake was made was because of the misinformation that all of you received. I had to sit here and listen through 24 minutes of presentation by the legal teams, and 24, practically all of the 24 minutes was misinformation. I know you were not given the right information back on May 20th of 2020 to make a proper decision. And one of the issues that I brought up, that I just do not understand how you can sit back and justify, is the unequal application of the city code. When two homes put in illegal driveways, just because of the last name that they had, and they paved it right into public area, at the time, that was fully public area, where was code enforcement? And this whole agreement negotiation that was predicated not by the direction of the city commission, city commission ordered a DEC Act to be filed. Instead, the council who works strictly for the city commission, who works strictly for the citizens of Daytona, decided to do something different. I sometimes question some of the ethics that were involved in this, and I certainly have been looking through the Florida Bar Rules of Ethics in this, and I probably will end up filing complaint on some of the things that happened. When the legal councils provided you with misinformation on an application that was false, it should have been rejected. I've been bringing that up for over two years now. And here we are in the same quagmire. It is important to remember, and I talked about this last week, we're talking about riparian rights here. And the city comprehensive plan clearly states there will be a minimum of access every mile. That was directly violated. Now, who dropped the ball? It was very clear in the city charter. Again, all that was smooth-talked by the law firm that represented someone with a famous last name, who financially benefited to great amounts because he had planned to sell his house. So he pushed this through, and when he went to sell his house, that was part of the deal. And if I was, and I don't have anything personal against the current owner, if I was him, I would be certainly filing lawsuits against him for his false application, and for the law firm for pushing the mistruths that you all heard. I hope this doesn't happen again.
Okay. Our next speaker is Ann Ruby, and on deck is Sandy Murphy.
137 Park Avenue. I have four things tonight, four things, yeah. As you're contemplating taking a more thoughtful approach to approving developments, and you have made the change to not requiring a vote on first reading, you might want to think about allowing public comment on first reading. That way, you would hear from the public at first reading before you had to hear for them, from them at the very last time the project appears from you, before you. So I just think that might be something to think about. Number two, way back a while ago, for the project reserve at Strickland, there was $75,000 pledged for workforce housing by the developer. I'm hoping nobody's losing track of that, that it's going to get, that it's collected, that it's sitting in a fund, and that eventually we'll be able to use it for something useful. So let's not forget about one resource that we already have. Okay, so it's only three things. Now that the, the Public Arts Board is kind of established with that, with now, by the vote tonight, I'd like to have you look at doing public, ordinances for public performance. I think that could have saved the whole naked cowboy debacle. But you could issue licenses, and public performances could occur at like city events, like Food Truck Friday. You could set up, have licensed buskers appearing there. You could have licensed buskers appearing on empty lots, on MMB, on a schedule, or on Main Street. And I think it could be something that could embolden and enliven the city streetscape without a lot of money expended, or even a lot of organization. Just get it, get people licensed, tell them when they can appear, let them go. People will show up. I don't know if you're familiar with Harvard Square at all? That is a very, very popular thing to do in Harvard Square, and it draws thousands of people every Friday and Saturday night.
Okay. Our next speaker is Sandy Murphy, and on deck is Jenny Nazak.
Good evening again, Sandy Murphy, 136 Park Avenue. I wanted to briefly talk about something that was mentioned in the mayor's comments on removing the deed restriction. And that is that removing the restriction would enable the park to begin to pay for itself. I want to, I hope that you were all clear, that that should not be a standard for a public amenity. We have taxes that pay for infrastructure, that pay for public safety, that pay for amenities. That's why we pay taxes. And so the, there should be no expectation that our public spaces pay for themselves any more than we should expect that all our roads carry tolls on them. And so I just wanted to point that out, that I see sometimes we talk about things paying for themselves. That's come up in the discussions about the Orange Avenue wreck. And it's a lovely thing, but I urge you not to begin to evaluate public amenities based on their return, because that's not what they're all about. Thank you.
I agree with you. But I think what I was trying to say is, we have not proven ourselves able to keep that to the standard that makes it usable. And, you know, it just, it costs a lot, and so, but I do understand your point, and I accept that as a legitimate criticism of my earlier remark.
Okay. Our next speaker is Jenny Nazak.
Good evening, everybody. Jenny Nazak, 501 Harvey. Yeah, Manatee Island, it's a nature park. It shouldn't actually require so much laborious maintenance, though we could leave it as a nature park. If we are concerned about antisocial and unlawful behavior in the park, regardless of one has a roof over their head or not, antisocial and unlawful behavior in the park, then it could be managed the same way that the esplanade is managed. There's very, not going to be a lot of antisocial and unlawful behavior in that esplanade. And I think we could do the same with Manatee Island. But as far as maintenance and landscaping, okay. So the two properties that I was so honored to recognize this evening, they have many things in common. The one is that they're both on the beach side. But another one is that they're both examples of what I have been trying to tout as puffy landscaping. They are puffy. The grasses are tall. The tree canopies are canopy. Actually, the crabby's photos, they had, I guess they had just given their landscaping a trim, so it wasn't as puffy as when I had first decided to recommend it. But nutshell, Mother Nature is puffy, fluffy, and curvaceous. We should not treat the great outdoors like a barber shop. It's okay to have a barber shop. It's okay to have short hair. Short hair is awesome.
And no hair.
Especially in the summer. But, but Mother Nature has many functions. So the type of beauty that Mother Nature offers us is also stormwater absorption, and drought protection, and biodiversity protection, and public health protection through shade and coolness. I always try to provide entertaining comments, because people get mad at environmentalists sometimes, and also people's eyes can glaze over. So I try to entertain you. And also because I love you all very much, so I try to provide entertainment. But it is actually a very serious topic. Heat, extreme heat is a very serious topic. We're hearing about it worldwide. And we've experienced both sides of that coin in a very short period. Very droughty June, and now we're getting, getting normal juicy again. That's why I'm wearing my water theme tonight instead of my burnt toast. We have water tonight. Okay, by the way, how much water in this area, which historically gets 49 inches of rainfall per year, how much water does a 1,000-square-foot roof collect in one year? It is over 32,000 gallons. Wow, that's a lot of water. What the heck happens to it? Well, we know what happens to it. It goes to Cottle Circle, or it goes to the Bowl, or it goes to places. And what can help? Vegetation, puffy, fluffy, curvaceous vegetation, absorbing that water, also sending it back up to the sky for the normal rain cycle. Therefore, I, as always, promote creation. Good evening. Love you all.
Thank you, ma'am.
That was our final speaker for this evening.
All right. This concludes our meeting. Good night, Daytona Beach.